Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I've got 4:15 and we're going to go ahead and get started with this first work session this afternoon. Madam Pluck, would you read the role, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Getty.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hurt.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All favor.
Agreed.
Post. Very good. We're here today to discuss the, have an update, kind of, on the Kimball Avenue project as that gets closer and nearer and closer to becoming a reality. I thought maybe it'd be a good idea to give council, kind of, an update as to where we are with that. So Larry Burns, is it the microphone? Larry, if you want to go ahead and start it, I'll just turn it over to you and with everybody else that's out there, I bet we can get a good idea. So thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you. As the mayor said, I'm Larry Behrens with Amen Design and I'm out of our Cedar Rapids office. We have a Waterloo office here also. Here to talk about the Kimball Avenue project. And just to remind everyone what the goal of the project is, to improve traffic safety, capacity and efficiency along Kimball Avenue and intersecting side roads for the different modes of travel within the corridor. Details about the project, Kimball Avenue is about one mile long, that section that's going to be reconstructed and widened. And there's about two-thirds of a mile of side roads to be widened or reconstructed and widened. We've identified about 100 budding parcels within the main line and side road corridors that are up against our corridor limits. Eleven of those parcels are going to require additional roadway right-of-way acquisition. Twenty-seven of those parcels are going to require temporary construction easement acquisition. Currently, the cost opinion for the project is about seven and a quarter million for preliminary engineering property acquisitions, construction and construction-related services such as construction observation, administration, and surveying. And the total federal aid amount for the project is a little over 4.2 million. Just to refresh everyone's memory about the limits of the project, we're starting about 500 feet south of Tower Park Drive on Kimball. And going northward, we've got about a quarter mile west and east of Kimball Avenue on San Marnon Drive that is within the project limits. And then we continue northward past Brookridge, past Rachel, past Park Lane, and go up to the north extents of the project, which is just south of Acadia Street. We've got Park Lane included in our project limits, and then we've got a portion of Ridgeway Avenue included in the project. These are just the intersections identified in the project. As I said, starting at Tower Park and moving up to and through Ridgway, five of those intersections are signalized. We've had some assistance with the project design development, specifically the Kimball Avenue Neighborhood Group provided their assistance in helping to develop pedestrian facility improvements for the corridor. And that neighborhood group is led by Felicia Cass, who's here tonight. This is a schematic drawing of the corridor that shows the various improvements. This is one of the plan sheets that's going to be, going into our plan set. It shows the five, let's see if I can get the laser pointer here, five signalized intersections. We've got a new right-in, right-out connection that's being proposed along San Marnon east of Kimball. Oh, and just to get you oriented, Kimball is running this direction with north to the right. Ridgway is up here, Park Lane here, San Marnon here. We're proposing to close off left turns at the San Marnon Drive frontage road at Kimball, so no left turns would be allowed at that intersection once the project is constructed and completed. We're also looking at adding a right-in, right-out connection on the west side of Kimball between Brookridge and Rachel.
Larry, before you leave that, would you go back?
Sure.
What's the upper left-hand part there at, right there? What is, what is that?
That is the pedestrian crossing that we're proposing to put across San Marnon Drive just west of Pheasant Lane. And we're proposing to use rectangular rapid flashing beacons in conjunction with pedestrian crossing signage at those crossings.
Is that where Fairway is at?
Correct.
What, it looks weird. Explain that to me, would you? What, you're not walking straight across? What are, what are we doing?
We, the, we're extending the sidewalk, and I've got a drawing that what we can show later on in detail, an aerial photo.
Are we going to be talking more about that intersection, generally speaking?
We can, but right now, I'll let you know, we're basically extending the sidewalk that is there today on the west side of Pheasant Lane southward to the edge of the San Marnon Drive pavement. We're taking them across the westbound lanes, and then they're going to walk through the raised median to the west, and then cross the eastbound lanes to Nicky Street. And the reason it's jogging like that is because Pheasant Lane is only, like, 28 or 30 feet wide, and Nicky Street is that big boulevard with the center median, so it's a much wider intersection. So we've got to move the pedestrians over before they cross, or else they'd be crossing right in the intersection of Nicky Street.
So they're going to actually be walking to the west down the center median of San Marnon?
A short distance, yes.
Just my lay perspective of that doesn't look all that good, but I'll let you go if you'd like to.
Is there going to be a decrease in the speed limit from Kimball going west on San Marnon?
There's no plans for that that I'm aware of. Jeff?
Yeah, Jeff, you have to tell us. Decreasing speed on San Marnon, I'm trying to change the schedule.
It's not something I've been made aware of.
A speed decrease?
Right.
Are you aware of any, Sandy? I guess I haven't been.
On San Marnon.
On San Marnon. I've had some people call me about, since we decreased it from Amesboro and west, that noise factor, you know, 45, speed limit goes 65.
We'd have to do a step down.
As long as we're on that intersection too, Larry. And again, maybe you were going to speak to this earlier, but does this give us an opportunity to do a left turn as you're west, eastbound on San Marnon into Fairway from eastbound?
We do not have that developed into the plans. We have, we are maintaining the right-in, right-out access with Pheasant Lane.
So if you're going to get to Fairway coming from the west, you still have to go all the way down and loop all the way around and?
We, we looked at that possibility within the last few days. The, it does, doesn't work out too well geometrically. We have to push all, the lanes that we're shifting right now, 12 feet to the north to provide the second eastbound left turn lane at Kimball, would have to be pushed another six feet farther north to provide enough width in that median area to accommodate those, that left turn lane with medians configured sufficiently so that we can eliminate the southbound left turn out of Pheasant to go east on San Marnon. And so that would, whoops, that would extend the tapers to the west into the east, or the westbound left turn lane at Jonathan Street. And it would also...
Okay, all of that is very confusing to me. It just seems like if we're tearing that all up, it'd be an opportune time to put a left turn lane in so we could get to Fairway if you're coming from the west. If it's not possible, that's...
The project at Kimball, we're actually changing the left turn phasing from protected permissive to protected-only phasing, so you can only turn left when you have an arrow. So it would not, I don't think, be appropriate to then, included in this project, provide an opening in the median that would allow left turns to be made unprotected across this high-speed lanes if we're providing more protection at Kimball, and then we provide less protection at Pheasant Lane.
Okay, I can understand that. Okay.
Okay, some of the proposed pedestrian facility improvements that we were able to incorporate into the project, we had a long list of different ideas that were developed, like I said, as a part of the Neighborhood Association group. We're looking at a pedestrian crossing at San Marnon on the west side of Pheasant Lane at Nicky Street with the rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacons. We've got pedestrian countdown signals and accessible push buttons at all five Kimball Avenue signalized intersections. We have added an eight-foot-wide shared-use path along the west side of Kimball Avenue in two locations between the southerly Kimball Avenue frontage road and Park Lane, and between the northerly Kimball Avenue frontage road intersection and Ridgway Avenue. We are adding share-the-road signing along the frontage road then, in those areas where the, the frontage road exists, between Brookridge Drive and the southerly access intersection, and between Park Lane and the northerly frontage road intersection onto Kimball. And then we're providing a short segment of a five-foot-wide sidewalk on the west side of Kimball Avenue between Ridgway and to the, up north to the south edge of the Ridgway Plaza parking lot, which is located about 75 feet north of Ridgway Avenue's center line. The improvements that we considered that we were not able to incorporate into the project either because of significant impacts, well, primarily because of significant impacts to adjacent parcels, was providing an eight-to-10-foot-wide shared-use path along the east side of Kimball Avenue, all the way north from Brookridge Drive up to Ridgway, providing an eight-foot-wide sidewalk, sorry, a six-foot-wide sidewalk along the west side of Kimball frontage road between Brookridge, basically along the two frontage road sections between Brookridge and the north, or the south Kimberly Road frontage road access, and between Park Lane and the north Kimberly Avenue frontage road intersection. The reason that was not carried forward would be the fact that we would have had to reconstruct every one of those driveways along the west side of the frontage road to make the sidewalk ADA compliant. Shelves and bike route signing along the frontage road were also things that were considered. We're not looking at, including those at this time. Like I said, we're going to provide the share-the-road signing along the frontage road at this point. And then the, there was a desire for a six-foot-wide sidewalk along the west side of Kimball Avenue between, basically along the Ridgway Plaza parking lot extending northward to Acadia. And we were not able to get that sidewalk in there without having significant impacts to the parking lot and taking away a lot of parking spaces from that shopping center parking lot. Other improvements that were considered but not incorporated was sidewalk along the north side of Ridgway between Bel Air Road and where the sidewalk currently terminates today in front of the Flowerama. Again, significant project impacts with the elevation differential right now between Ridgway and the parking lot. Again, would lose a lot of parking spaces in that parking lot if the sidewalk was constructed there. And then there was desire for pedestrian crossings with refuge islands at three different places. Two on Kimball, one down by Tower Park Drive, out, just outside of our project reconstruction limits, and then up at Cedar Valley Hospice Home Access Drive, which, again, is just slightly outside of our current project limits. And then Bel Air Road west of Kimball Avenue, which, again, is just barely outside of our project limits currently. All of those would have required additional widening on those roadways to provide enough room for refuge for the pedestrians to cross half the street at a time and then make the rest of their crossing when traffic was, was clear in the other direction, and would have extended the project limits out quite a ways. So now here is just some aerial photo showing what we're proposing to do, make it a little easier than me trying to describe it in a thousand words. This is the south end of the project. Again, we're looking, this is Kimball Avenue, north is to the right. We're starting with pavement marking, and then we get to Tower Park Drive. We're creating a northbound left turn lane. We have room for a short southbound left turn lane onto Tower Park. And then we have one northbound left turn lane at San Marnon. And the inside lane is striped out there to align with the other dual left turn lane southbound on the other side of, of San Marnon, which you can see right there is the two southbound lefts. Now we have widened that north approach to provide not only two, two lanes for left-turning traffic, we have a through lane, and we have a dedicated right turn lane. Moving north, this is where we are, we've got the frontage road. We're putting an island, a triangular-shaped island in here to eliminate the left turns and force traffic to turn right out of the frontage road. We still will allow left turns southbound into the frontage road. And we will, we obviously have the right turns northbound into the frontage road. And then from that point northward, we've got a five-lane section. It is 59 feet wide back-to-back. It is about six feet wider than it currently is today. Today, it's 53 feet wide for the most part throughout the corridor. And the way we are providing that additional lane with only widening six feet is by providing narrower lanes going from 12-foot lanes to 11-foot lanes, and going from a two-and-a-half-foot curb and gutter section to a one-and-a-half-foot wide curb and gutter section. We're not doing anything significantly at Brookridge, other than just tying back in at the returns. Here between Brookridge and Rachel is where we're proposing the right-in, right-out connection that we think will provide some relief for the McDonald's and for traffic that's trying to get, we're back down at Brookridge, trying to get off of the frontage road and turn left to get onto Brookridge. They can come up here to the north and turn out and go south on Kimball. And we are providing a center-raised median, concrete median in front of this new access point to make sure that it functions as a right-in, right-out-only access. Oh, here, let's see. Right, lost my pointer. Right here, we're going to have to be building up the concrete retaining wall that's along that parking lot because of the additional width we have with Kimball. So that's a bit of a constraint there, that elevation drop-off into that parking lot. Okay, moving north, this is Rachel. Again, we've got now a left turn lane northbound at Rachel Street. We've got a left turn lane developed for the southerly frontage road access. Moving north, we've got turn lanes at Park Lane. And what this doesn't show on these slides, which are somewhat dated, is that we're providing turn lanes on Park Lane. We are widening Park Lane from 31 feet wide to 37 feet wide back-to-back, and providing a left turn lane on both the east and west approach. Again, a northbound left turn lane at the northerly frontage road intersection just south of the Walgreen parking lot and by the KFC right there. And then northbound left turn and southbound left turn lanes on Kimball. Again, this slide is somewhat dated. I haven't updated it yet, but this, this lane configuration on Ridgway is old. We are now providing a five-lane section on Ridgway Avenue on both approaches. So we're going to have a left, a through, and a through-right in each direction, east-west, and two departure lanes on Ridgway. So it also, right at the intersection of Kimball, is 59 feet wide back-to-back to provide that five-lane section, to provide a centered turn lane and eliminate the split phasing that is there today wherever your approach goes one at a time. That is where we tie back in to the existing 53-foot-wide section just north of the driveway for the Ridgway Plaza Shopping Center and the first entrance for the Medical Center. This is Pheasant, now we're at San Marnon. This is San Marnon. This is Pheasant Lane. We have shifted this raised median north 12 feet to provide this second eastbound left turn lane at Kimball. And then in addition to that, we're widening on the north side to provide a westbound right turn lane at Pheasant. And then we're also providing a longer right turn lane eastbound at Kimball. There's kind of a short little taper today that doesn't, that might give you enough room to turn right if you, there was only one or two cars at the stop line, but otherwise you're blocked off. This will be a full 150-foot-long right turn lane.
Larry, can you make a U-turn from that inside left turn lane?
It's currently signed no U-turn.
Okay, will we be able to with this configuration?
I do not plan on changing or eliminating the no U-turn sign unless directed to do so by the city.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to get it easier and get to Fairway from the west.
I'm assuming that's why it's there, because they don't want that to happen.
Well, Fairway does, and we do, but I mean, that's...
It's probably a safety issue. Now we're east of Kimball on San Marnon. We've got the right turn lane that, again, we've had to shift these lanes north 12 feet as well to stripe out the second turn lane that will just be painted white there on the inside. We'll have one left turn lane westbound to southbound on Kimball. So we've got dual left south and dual lefts east, and then single left turn lane north and, and west. As we move farther to the east, this is where we're proposing to put the right-in, right-out connection onto San Marnon from the San Marnon Drive frontage road that will be used because we're now eliminating the left turns at the frontage road intersection with Kimball Avenue. So traffic would be able to come back this direction, get out, and, and proceed west or south on Kimball. This is how we are proposing to stage the project, essentially on Kimball Avenue. What we are, what we are doing is the side of the road, we've got it broken down into four different segments throughout the length of the corridor, and starting at the south end at San Marnon, we're going to start construction on the west side of the road where the longitudinal storm sewer is the running, running, the storm sewer that runs north-south with the roadway center line. Shift traffic over to the east side, provide a barrier rail, and have one lane of traffic in each direction through that first segment. Then when that pavement gets constructed and cured and ready to be open to traffic, we'll shift the traffic over to the west side, and they will have, again, one lane of traffic in each direction while the east side of the roadway is constructed. And we do that in four segments along the corridor. The first segment, or the first pair of segments basically starts at the south end and goes up to just pass that right-in, right-out intersection that we're placing between Brookridge and Rachel. The next pair of stages is up by Park Lane and the Park Lane intersection, and goes south to the high point in the road and north to the low point in the road for Kimball. The third pair, five and six, is between those two. And seven and eight pair, the opposite sides of the roadway is the north end of the project, from the low point in Kimball, basically north up to the end of the project, north of Ridgway almost to Acadia. And then other stages can be going on concurrently with those along the, with the widening along San Marnon Drive with the widening there. On San Marnon, we're proposing to do the widening on the outside first to allow those lanes to be shifted over, and then we will shift the raised median in the inside and close, close off the inside through lanes on San Marnon to allow that construction to happen, and we'll have the widened portion on the outside for the traffic to travel Development timeline. Plans are to submit check plans tomorrow. Final plans for a March 18th letting date at the Department of Transportation is Christmas Eve. We're looking at conducting a third public information meeting in January of next year. And then we anticipate project construction happening beginning in late April, going through November, whenever the snow starts flying in 2014. And then we're looking at two construction seasons with construction also happening in 2015. The intent is to have the contractor construct those pairs of stages, the west and the east side of the roadway. We think we can get the first four stages done in 2014, and we just want to make sure that the contractor doesn't begin one side of the Kimball roadway without being able to complete the other side so that it's, it's messed up with one lane traffic in each direction over the winter time with barrier rail and things like that, which would not avoid having that happen. So that is the presentation. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you, Larry. Counsel, do you have any questions at this point?
I've got a couple.
David?
I was unclear on, on the sidewalk improvements or bicycle lane improvements, if any, on this project. And is there, it looks like there's today a continuous sidewalk all the way down Kimball. Is that true? Is that...
There's sidewalk from Brookridge to Ridgway.
Okay.
Yes.
And so that's all staying, but no real improvements to it?
We are creating an eight-foot-wide shared-use path slash recreational trail between the access road intersection and Park Lane and between the access road intersection and Ridgway. If I can get back to that. Right there, we're replacing the four-foot-wide sidewalk with eight-foot-wide shared-use path. And there, we're, in front of the Walgreen, basically, we're replacing the sidewalk with shared-use path, eight feet wide. Again, because of the, the restrictions we had with the right-of-way and the way this corridor is already built up, trying to go with wider trails, wider sidewalk would have had significantly more impacts on the adjacent properties and been more costly. So we basically, we're, we're going to provide wider trail down to the frontage road, and then we're providing those, those share-the-road signs on the frontage road so bicycle traffic can use the frontage road to travel. The pedestrians can still use the sidewalk that is, I think, a stand, four-foot-wide sidewalk. And then there is no sidewalk proposed between Brookridge and San Marnon because of the restrictions we have with right-of-way.
Second question, David?
Yeah, I was just concerned about the one raised median you were proposing.
Along Kimball?
Yeah.
For the right-in, right-out?
For the right-in, right-out. And whether, I guess it's a question for Mark, too, of how that would impact plowing or, because you've got just one raised median on that whole road.
As far as the motorization by the, the, that, that route.
There will be signing on both ends indicating, like, a keep right sign, and the, and the curb will be painted yellow. So, I mean, if it's covered up with snow, you wouldn't see it, but you will see the keep right sign.
So it'll be visible.
Right.
Okay.
Bob?
Can you refresh my memory? What's the driver of this? Is the, the amount of cars per day going through the intersection, is that going to increase that much? Or is it this design right now is not correct for both?
The level of traffic is projected to increase somewhat. I don't remember what the percentage increase is. What I think is driving this primarily is eliminating the split phasing with the signals and providing more efficient travel along the corridor with the, because like I said, right now at Brookridge, northbound goes, then stops, then southbound goes. And that happens at Park Lane, and that happens at all four approaches at Ridgway. With this widening, with being, with providing a centered turn lane, it will function like other intersections do throughout the community and other communities where you have the left turns start simultaneously... left turns start simultaneously, whichever one has the most traffic could continue a little longer than they both timeout. And then you have the two traffic starting in both directions on Kimball Avenue going simultaneously. So it's much more efficient, there's less delay, there's less vehicle emissions and travel time through the corridor is shorter.
Okay, guys, I don't want to cut conversation off because it's good conversation, that's why we're here, but we have another one at 4:45 here. Larry, thank you very much for coming in. Counsel, if you do see any issues with this, you know, write them up, send them to me, send them to our engineering department. I still have a couple, curious about a couple of the things that I'd like some answers to, but thank you, Larry. Thanks all of you for coming for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't need a motion to adjourn. We're going to go right into the 4:40 meeting, which is now, already we're five minutes into it. So if whichever representative from the Cedar Valley Alliance would like to come forward and give us a start on our Cedar Valley Alliance quarterly update, that would be great. Mr. Brighton, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is David Brighton, publisher of The Courier. I am also treasurer of the Cedar Valley Alliance, so they wanted me to say a few remarks to begin with, but we'll get into the meat of the discussion with Lisa and Carrie and Steve in a minute. My first objective is basically to thank you. Thank you for supporting both the Chamber and the Cedar Valley Alliance. You know, we couldn't do the work that we do without funding. We also couldn't do without volunteers and I represent the volunteers, but I'm also a, as a courier, as an investor, like you are. And I'm pleased to say that, you know, we're moving forward. We're doing a lot of good things with the help of Noel and his staff that are happening here in Waterloo and we appreciate your support and your financial support and your understanding and working to make this a better place to live, work and play. The first person that I'd like to draw upon is Lisa Skubel and then she'll be followed by Carrie Dara and then Steve Doss, CEO. And Carrie, or pardon me, Lisa, will have a few remarks on external marketing and business growth.
Good afternoon. You received packets earlier just with Economic Development Services as well as the Tech Works and you can read what's in front of you, of course, I'm just going to highlight a few things that aren't on the list. Ending our fiscal year, ending June 30 of this year, we, our goal was to identify 26 new opportunities for projects existing as well as new companies coming into the area. And we exceeded that. Our goal was 20 and we ended it the year with 26. Of those 26 new opportunities, you can see in your sheets, five of those 26 were existing Waterloo businesses that were interested in some type of expansion in the coming months and years. 16 were new lead opportunities where Waterloo would be a candidate for those new lead opportunities for new locations. Of all those projects, of the five existing and the new, the new lead opportunities are still in play. Sometimes with new leads, it takes a while for them to manifest themselves into viable project. And there's one right now we're working on with an immediate timetable that Noel and I've had discussions as lately as last week on positioning Waterloo for that operation. Of those five existing, two of them were completed this past fiscal year, Hydrate and of course, the KWWL project that we provided support on the business end for KWWL. And then this fiscal year so far, starting July 1, where now you're seeing the documents or the lists through September where it notes six opportunities. Ending October 31, we had 10 opportunities so far. Eight of those would be attributed to a possible Waterloo location, two are existing businesses and six would are new lead opportunities. And along those lines, we continue to do the external marketing in an aggressive manner. Right now, we're doing a cold call initiative to companies engaged primarily in central and on the east coast, engaged in advanced manufacturing that can benefit from our supply chain and also companies that manufacture food equipment. We're also trying to make some headway in identifying companies, end-user data center companies that would be interested in expanding for obviously our Highway 20 Business Park. Of those 900 companies, out of them, out of the cold calls, our goal is to identify six that would have some expansion interest in Waterloo and the Cedar Valley area. So far, we have identified three and in fact, I met with one of them last week in central Illinois. So our goal is six by February 1 and I'm hoping that and anticipating we'll make that. Two weeks ago, we had on the workforce development and UNI fair, job fair, which was a chance to engage our existing businesses with students at UNI for intern opportunities. We had a small group, select group of businesses, 12 businesses in total that participated. Five of those were Cedar, or excuse me, five of those at UNI were Waterloo businesses. So we had a nice balance of representation on that end. Our purpose with our workforce development initiatives, and you heard about it in the past and moving forward, the bottom line is connecting businesses with potential job applicants for permanent positions, but also for internship opportunities as well. A week later, we're in Fabtech. Last week, we were at a Fabtech trade show at McCorrern Place and that is an advanced manufacturing show. It's a global show that happens once every year in a big, a big way at McCorrern Place. On the off years, they have smaller venues. We were exhibiting there. We're in the process, we did receive some leads, at least three that appear viable that once we get together with our region partners, we'll be able to identify which ones are viable and what type of follow-up we'll do individually with them. Also last week, we had a pretty good, pretty full schedule. We called, we had 11 off-site call meetings with companies from Wisconsin to Illinois to central Illinois, eight site selection consultants, one company, new location that I mentioned just here previously, and two corporate headquarter visits. And actually, both headquarter visits were Waterloo-based companies. And I'm happy to say, and Noel's helping me with one right now, both of them are thinking long-term about expanding their existing Waterloo operation. We feel those corporate headquarter visits are very important for us to attach not only a relationship with our local folks, but also with corporate officials who also make those decisions and rely on our information and input to make those decisions and investment decisions in the Cedar Valley area in Waterloo. And next week, I will be in Minnesota as well for a short prospect trip. We have four appointments scheduled in a day and a half, so that is part of our external marketing initiative to identify new lead opportunities and call on existing corporate headquarter visits. And one of the things that you'll be saying probably by the next time we meet for upcoming trips, we will plan an east coast marketing trip. We find, we find based on our concentration of headquarter companies located in the Cedar Valley area, a lot of them are east of the Mississippi River. So we're going to make new prospect visits as well as calling on those headquarter visits, too. Our goal this year, fiscal year, is to make at least 10 corporate headquarter visits. We'd like to increase that as we continue as the years go by and then also revisit those existing visits that we make. One of the things that you will be saying more so of is the workforce development, as I mentioned earlier. And a lot of the initiatives, the key will be attaching, connecting businesses with the workforce in our area as well as providing a funnel for existing businesses so they can expand and grow in the Cedar Valley area. And also, we have a workforce to also attract new businesses to the area. If you have any questions, I can answer them now or defer to Carrie and we can wait till the end.
Let's wait till the end, Lisa, unless somebody has anything to write down for Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, I guess. As Lisa said, you have updates in your packet and I just wanted to highlight a few of those things. First, with regard to community development, we have our Cedar Valley Leadership Institute underway with 27 attendees, hoping to prepare 27 new area leaders for us to work with. In addition to that, our Leader Valley and Leader Me program, it's our collaborative effort with the elementary schools throughout the Cedar Valley. We have 37 events or training sessions planned in the next several months. And I cannot go without letting Betty share with you that she's had 20 ambassador and ribbon-cutting calls since we last spoke. We are just closing our Total Resource Campaign where we raise dollars for our sponsorships. And in addition to that, we just completed three business education series throughout the month of October. And on to the Tech Works campus, with regard to the campus, our west site, west campus site improvements we'll be getting shortly. And that will be the site north of where the Deer Museum is being constructed and around the Tech One building or the R building. We're getting prepared for our Cedar Valley Coalition Trip in the spring where we'll visit with our congressional reps about the updates on Tech Works as well as all of the Cedar Valley. And the Tech One building, we're really excited to continue our relationship and partnership with the Iowa Innovation Corporation to bring the state of Iowa's advanced manufacturing center to the Tech Works campus. And while that will be a project that will be owned and fairly, for the most part, operated by the state, it will be located in Waterloo at Tech Works and serving, providing services for small and medium-sized enterprise manufacturing throughout the state of Iowa. So we're really excited that that continues to get traction. As you know, Mark Kettrell from our area is now the president of that corporation and he sits on the Tech Works Board. So we've got a good working relationship with all of them and especially the president, so that's very useful. We're continuing on the programming for the Tech One capital improvements for floors one and two using the appropriated funds that we received from the legislature last year. And then some modifications to floor three where you may remember the 3D printer was installed last month. That's getting lots of use, lots of demonstrations, lots of activity. And it's really putting certainly more than just Cedar Valley on the map, the state of Iowa is really being recognized for being progressive from the appropriation standpoint, legislative standpoint in helping secure this resource in order to help our manufacturing community. And then as far as the Tech Two project, you know that we're still working hard, the developers, to get historic designation for the Tech Two building. They still are very confident, they've put together a very good team. Having the government shut down for a month, close to a month, didn't help and did slow down things and now with the holidays, they're still looking very confidently at securing that, putting together good people to move forward. But it looks like it'll be after the first of the year before they get much as far as response. So similar to Lisa, if there's questions, I'll wait until Steve has done, but be happy to field anything.
Thank you. Carrie, were you guys involved and/or Steve with the STEM fair last week at all, peripherally or directly or?
Somewhat. I was on that committee, but certainly cannot take any credit for it. They, that was...
What a fabulous event that was.
Angela, Angela from the Waterloo School System deserves the credit for that.
Counsel, I don't know, I'm kind of throwing something in here, but if you didn't attend that, if you even heard about it, the STEM fair that was last week at the Five Sultan Brothers was at 130-some vendors, I believe, and it was just an absolutely incredible event.
The place was packed.
Yeah.
And you know, I don't get too warm and fuzzy about events like, but to see that place packed with exhibitors, everybody went out of their way to really find meaningful ways for the kids to get engaged.
Yeah. And that's, you know, that was one of the most warm and fuzzy things that I saw where there were families, there were whole families with moms and dads and grandpas and grandmas and kids and it was just an incredible event. So anyway, if you had anything to do with it, congratulations.
And yeah, thank you. Mostly, we loaned our logo to it and we're very glad to be a part of it and we want to be a bigger part of it next year, obviously, to help expand that, the reach of that STEM fair because that's what it's all about on the talent side. My purpose is to say thank you again. We appreciate the kind of cooperation that we have with the city of Waterloo, your attitude towards development and expansion of your economic base is very important when we're trying to do our job. The things that I would point out in the, in the reports that you've heard this evening so far briefly is number one, you know, one of the things happening here that isn't happening in a lot of places, especially the size metro that we're in, is spec industrial space. And you've got a significant amount of that happening or being considered. And I think that that means that we've got a good location when people are willing to come in on a private basis and make those kinds of investments on a speculative basis. The interest in the Tech Works campus space, I think it's very significant that we have the kind of projects looking at our Tech One space now that is going to be very meaningful. We're a center of manufacturing in Iowa and in Iowa, manufacturing is the top industry. So for us to have the kind of capabilities that are being considered there now to advance manufacturing in Iowa and the heartland part of the Midwest is going to be a significant, not only to our local folks in manufacturing, but in the Midwest and draw talent here as well. The levels of activity in the market is picking up and you heard the report from Lisa about the response that we're getting from consultants and in our corporate visits, there are projects on the board again and they are interested in the Cedar Valley and we're very, that's different than it's been in the last few years. And so we're pleased to see that trend. And finally, a couple of bragging points that I just wanted to draw your attention to, I hope you saw them. Number one, we're one in the top 20 list of top college towns in the country. That's a, that's a big deal when we're talking about young talent and trying to recruit and build that image of places where we want young people to come and enjoy the Cedar Valley. And also, a top place for a veteran-friendly employment environment in the nation. Number five, that's, that's huge. Both talent-oriented and we're very pleased to be in those. In the old days, you had to really campaign for those kinds of lists. You still do for some of them, but these two and many others are entirely data-driven and we never see them until they're announced. So that speaks volumes for the kind of environment and economic base that you're, you're creating here. So on that, we'll say thanks again and if there are questions for any of the group?
Very good, Steve. Thank you. Counsel? Bob?
The 3D printer.
Yes.
Are you going to do some type of marketing or some type of, I mean, I think describing this 3D printer, I don't think it really describes what that machine actually can do and the benefit it can give our manufacturing folks here.
Yes.
It's very unique to the United States of having somebody that would actually have one of these products up and running, helping our tool and die companies, our major manufacturers try to, being able to scale one of their products with that machine versus trying to do it the old way.
Prototype, yeah.
Building prototype. I mean, they can build, basically build this prototype in this machine and come out and start engineering from it. I think we need to do some newspaper articles, maybe have the, do a special monitors. But I think, I think the story needs to be told.
Thank you. I believe it will be much more loudly than it is right now. This is kind of a quiet period that the machine actually belongs to the Metal Casting Center at the University of Northern Iowa and they operate it, they've got it started up, they're starting to do some meaningful work for contracts as well as for students. But it's kind of the quiet period where they're trying to get everything set up and perfected and, you know, we did it in such a hurry that even the space that they're in isn't as attractive as we want it to be or set up the way that they want it to be. So I think over the next few months, you'll see more and more tours so that people get an eyeball on it and then you'll start to see more and more publicity about what it really does mean in terms of optimizing, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars in a product development process, you know, in a year. If you can visualize this, where you'll go to the second floor and, and look at your creation in virtual space, in two virtual reality caves, and then be able to take it upstairs to the 3D printer, either in the one that's there now or the one they plan to install in the near future, to be able to optimize that, that piece or the product in a model form before it ever goes to full prototype or production is just huge for us. And to be able to have that gauge of scale of a facility available to manufacturers on a contract basis as well as for educational purposes and not just proprietary use tucked away in somebody's shop is, again, huge for us to be able to attract people.
Steve, thank you. Again, thanks for...
I want to thank you also for the work that you've done with the vets and continue to work with the veterans. I know they're greatly appreciated.
Well, we're going to take advantage of that opportunity. They bring huge skill sets back home with them and we want us to be a place they recognize as a good place to find employment.
I salute you for that.
Oh, well, thank you, sir.
Thanks, guys, and thank you, Steve, for taking the time and bringing your team to let us know. Counsel, those are our two work sessions. Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. We are adjourned. And welcome to our Monday, November 25th regularly scheduled meeting of our Waterloo City Council. And have a good crowd in, in house tonight, so welcome to all of you, and also those that might be watching us on our public access television channel. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Getty.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Walper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Thank you. Would all of you please join me in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer? Thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance tonight is going to be led by our Director of Safety Services, Dan Trelka. Dan, please.
Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also the minutes of our November eighteenth regular session meeting.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any discussion regarding the agenda or the minutes of November eighteenth? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, a move that we receive, place on file and approve the consent agenda. That's items one A through B seven. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we pay our bills, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are four million, one thousand dollars and eight cents. Four, comma, zero, zero, one, comma, zero, 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 point, zero, eight.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any discussion or questions regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
I would vote yes, but I need to abstain on a payment of a hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents to Schmidt Telecom Partners.
Thank you. Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. We have a couple of people to acknowledge tonight. First of all, the appointment of Sean Page from the civil service list to the position of curator at the Waterloo Center for the Arts, and that's effective today. Sean, congratulations. Stand up so we can all see you. I know Sean's been with the Art Center for quite a while down there and just does a great job, so it's, it's good to get Kent's position filled, and I'm sure we made a great choice there, Sean, so we're looking forward to a great relationship continuing. And also, we have Deanne Kobliski. Deanne, if you would stand up. Deanne is our new, I'm not sure what Deanne's title is.
Administrative Secretary.
Administrative Secretary in the clerk's office, here to help out Susie and give us all a helping hand. So, Deanne, welcome to you, and we hope we have long and prosperous relationships for both of you. So, thank you both. All right, item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, a notice of public hearing for the development agreement with Blackhawk Contracting Development of Waterloo, Iowa to authorize the sale and conveyance of a portion of city-owned property for one dollar located along Lafayette Street near its intersection with East Third Street for the construction of six-town home dwellings.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And the hearing is now open. Is this, am we doing this right? Okay, the hearing's now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file?
There were none.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion right now to table this indefinitely, leaving the hearing open.
Second.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the table?
Why?
No, please.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. We're working with Mr. Roof on the details of the site as we started to work on this a little bit further. Of course, this is an existing parking lot site, so we're looking at the, the cost of having demolished the parking lot into the development agreement and all that to, to make it work for both parties. So we'll be making some changes to the development agreement that you had, so we're asking this to be tabled so we can make those changes.
Thank you.
Very good. Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call vote for the motion to table, please.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number three, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, a notice of public hearing, and that's for the real estate purchase agreement with RNS Commercial LLC and RNS Rental LLC, also known as S&amp;J Construction of Waterloo, Iowa, for the sale of city-owned land located at East Ninth and Sycamore Streets in the amount of one dollar plus up to two thousand dollars in closing costs in connection with amendment to development agreement.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to item number three?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number three, real estate purchase with RNS Commercial? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding item number three? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving said real estate purchase agreement and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Let's do resolutions, please. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Greenwood, four, five, and six.
Okay. Four is a resolution approving the city of Waterloo annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, 2013. Authorize publication of this report and the submission of the report to the state of Iowa. Five is a resolution fixing the date of hearing as December sixteenth, 2013, on the issuance of not to exceed three million, five hundred thousand dollars of general abrogation urban renewal bonds. Instruct city clerk to publish the notice. And six is a resolution approving agreement of interconnect and preemption of highway traffic control signals with automatic crossing signals with the Chicago Central and Pacific Railroad Company for the design and conduction on the railroad's part of interconnection between the city's traffic signal controller and the railroad's preemption and detection system. Authorize the mayor to execute that document.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding four, five, or six? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
I'm staying on seven, yes and eight.
Okay, very good. The motions carry. You bet, Bob. Let's do nine, ten, and eleven, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number nine is adopting a resolution approving golf course pro-shop agreement with Monte Meyer to provide golf pro services at South Hills Golf Course for the period of January first, 2014 to December thirty-first, 2018. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Item number eight is adopting a resolution approving golf course pro-shop agreement with Andy Devine to provide golf pro services at Earl Warren Memorial Golf Course for the period of June, January first, 2014 to December thirty-first, 2018. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the pro-shop agreements? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
I'm staying on seven, yes and eight.
Okay, very good. The motions carry. You bet, Bob. Let's do nine, ten, and eleven, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number nine is adopting a resolution approving golf course pro-shop agreement with Monte Meyer to provide golf pro services at South Hills Golf Course for the period of January first, 2014 to December thirty-first, 2018. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Item ten is adopting a resolution approving golf course pro-shop agreement with Andy Devine to provide golf pro services at Earl Warren Memorial Golf Course for the period of June, January first, 2014 to December thirty-first, 2018. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And item number eleven is adopting a resolution approving golf course pro-shop agreement with Nate Lubes to provide golf pro services at Gate Park Golf Course for the period of January first, 2014, December thirty-first, 2018. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the pro-shop agreements? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Let's do the next four, please. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Ms. Cole.
I move we adopt a resolution approving recommendation of award of bid to Truck Country of Cedar Rapids in the amount of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars for the purchase of one 2014 Parks truck with chip box. Thirteen is a resolution approving a tolling agreement and authorize mayor to execute said document. Thirteen is a resolution approving recommendation of award of a contract, of contract to Rick Left's Excavating Limited of Anamosa in the amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars for the La Porte Road Pumping Station and Force Main, contract number eight four seven, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Fifteen is a resolution approving completion of project, release of eight thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and five cents retainage, and final acceptance of work performed by Municipal Pipe Tool Company LLC of Hudson at a total cost of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and one dollars in conjunction with the two, 2012 CIP sewer lining contract number eight three four.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cole and Mr. Getty. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those four, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Those motions carry. If we could do the next four, then, please. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walper.
Number sixteen is a resolution approving a supplemental agreement, number one, with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for the addition of electrical upgrades, heating, ventilating, and air conditioning improvements in conjunction with the Waterloo Eastern WPCF Belt Press Edition, contract number six nine seven, authorize mayor to execute said document. Number seventeen is a resolution approving the total acquisition contract with Prairie Construction Company, Inc., successive to the interest of Jensen Oldson and Sons Construction Company for the parcel number eight nine one three dash one six dash three zero one, comma, zero, zero, one. Auditor Whitney Road Plot Platt, number fifty-four, generally located at the southeast corner of North Hackett Road and Greenwood Avenue in the amount of forty thousand dollars plus up to a thousand dollars in closing expenses in conjunction with the Sherwood Park Recreation Area and Hartman Reserve Nature Center additions project, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number eighteen is a resolution approving a development agreement with MMC Properties LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, for the construction of ten thousand square foot industrial building on lot number two of the Southport Edition Geraldine Road, adding three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars of taxable value to the site and offering a grant to purchase property for seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number nineteen is a resolution saying the date of hearing is December ninth, 2013, to approve the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at sixteen forty Cherry Hills Drive in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars with a development agreement to Robert Castro and instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Walper. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding any of those four, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, or nineteen?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones. Just a comment on number seventeen. That's being paid for by a REIT grant.
Very good. Thank you for noting that. It's worthwhile. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Ms. Cole.